I'm Ashley Buttonstone and this is Make It Public and today I have Philip Stockton with me. How are you doing Philip?
Very well, I appreciate you having me on today.
Yeah, thanks for coming. So for our listeners, go ahead and give us your little bio here.
Well, my name's Philip Stockton obviously and I worked in sales and marketing for about 10 years before I went back to school to get involved in politics. I got my degree in political science and I just wanted to, you know, help candidates that I felt were wanting to really do good for our community. And so I've been doing that for the past four years and now I'm running for Bellingham School Board.
Great. So what made you run for school board?
Well, as you know, Jen Mason, my opponent, she's been in the national news lately. And some of the stuff that's been going on in not only Bellingham School District, but also in Washington in general has been very concerning and...
For those who don't know, can you elaborate? First of all, School District, Bellingham, can you just, is that a, is it all of it at large?
Yeah, it's an at-large seat, all of them are. But what's kind of been going on is Jen Mason, she owns a sex shop in town, which...
The all ages one?
Yep, wink wink. And that in and of itself isn't a bad idea. You know, it's not bad for someone to own something like that. But she's made it a mainstay in her campaign. She promotes it as a school board director. And it's pretty, pretty bad, I think. I don't think, you know, someone like that should be on the school board deciding what's happening to our schools and our students. So no one was running against her and I decided to just kind of throw my hat in the ring. I thought somebody needed to give her a run for money. There is a lot of parents in the Bellingham School District that are upset about what's going on. And this isn't just some crazy right-wing people. These are regular liberal Democrats who see this stuff. They're teaching not only this sex ed stuff, which is very inappropriate for the ages they've decided to do it, but they're teaching critical theory, which is a racist theory. So they're teaching minorities that they'll never amount to anything because of the Western culture is going to bring them down and they're oppressed. They're teaching white kids and Asian kids that basically you are the oppressor and you're bad by just being born. So you need to realize that and be put in your place. So I wanted to, I wanted to help fight that. And I know Bellingham School District, a lot of the people on the school board agree with this kind of stuff. And I know I'm not going to jump in there and make a huge change, but at least there will be a bridge for the community, for the parents, for the students that are concerned about this, where I can highlight the things that are going on. And that's kind of why I ran. I didn't want to run. I helped run campaigns. I don't run for office. But no one was doing it and I always tell people to run for office and I thought I would be a hypocrite if I didn't do it when I had the opportunity to do it.
Yeah, so you mentioned national news and, you know, we've talked about this a little bit already on the podcast, but the national news comes from a first grade teacher reading a book.
Yes, there was a big deal made because a first grade teacher in the Bellingham School District was reading a book called I Am Jazz. And the book is about a transgender person who went from being a boy to a girl. And they're reading this to six, seven-year-old kids. And I'm okay with equality and, you know, teaching every point of view, but these are little kids being indoctrinated with political ideology. And it celebrates this. It basically is telling kids that this is wonderful. If you do this, you're great. What kind of kid doesn't want that, want attention and be told they're doing a good job?
Right.
So that's what makes it really dangerous and...
And we're seeing that especially in middle school ages right now. It's cool to be pansexual. Like that's the big thing. Pansexual is like, just love everybody. It's like this new wave of like the seventies stuff, like peace and love, love everybody, love is love. And so, you know, it's very concerning because it's not even heavily pushed yet. And, you know, I live in Linden and I'm seeing this in Linden where it's, there's not a lot of teachers teaching it, but it's on social media. It's everywhere. And, you know, we've got our, our music artists pushing it. And now we have this huge, you know, Pride Month is a big deal in school now.
Yes.
And I know there's parents out in Baker who weren't none too thrilled about what was going on on Pride Month.
Yeah, there were a thousand different parents that signed this letter talking about all of the political ideology stuff being taught to their kids. And it's pretty sad because I was talking to a parent in Bellingham, it was actually Sunday, and she was telling me what's going on. And she said, her kid is 13 years old. He goes to school. They've been all about teaching Pride Month. And she asked him, hey, what are you doing for Memorial Day? And he looked kind of confused and she goes, do you know what Memorial Day is? Did they teach you that in school? No, no, all about Pride Month. And he had no idea why he was going to be off school for the Monday, which obviously that's a problem if you're getting all of this one-sided information and nothing from the middle or nothing from the other side. That's dangerous and you're, you're creating a system that doesn't allow kids to question. And that's, that's horrible. We should be right down the middle. No, this is, this is middle school and even in, you know, like we talked about the I Am Jazz book, it's first grade they're teaching this stuff. Kids don't care about sexuality. Kids don't care about color. They just want to play with their friend and it doesn't matter who it is or what they look like. And you should let kids do that. I feel like they're stealing the innocence from children by forcing this stuff on them.
Completely stealing the innocence because, you know, we talked about, you know, kids aren't even curious about this stuff until you start jamming it down their throats. And once you start talking about the, I mean, the sex education stuff is, sex education used to be what your body was doing at puberty. That was the education and that made kids uncomfortable. My sixteen-year-old was like, I hated that. I didn't want to do it. You know, it was terrible because I gave them the option. If they want to do it and one of them opted out and my son was like, oh, I'm, you know, I'm gonna take it. And then he was so embarrassed, so uncomfortable. And they still separate them, boys and girls in that, in fifth grade. Now we're gonna put the class, keep the class together, teach all of this stuff and it's okay.
Well, though, when they were passing this sex education law in the legislature, they had it televised. When they were debating it, they could not show the pictures from the books because it was so pornographic. The regular TV channels wouldn't let it to be shown, so they had to blur out the images. And you're teaching this stuff to kindergarteners, some of it. That's what's, it baffles me. And I, I mean, when you, it goes along this ideology being forced down people's throats. My, my campaign manager, she's seventeen, she goes to Linden. Linden is like Dutch conservative families. She said that kids there actually make up being another gender because they're bullied. Because if they're hetero or cis. And that's not right. We're supposed to be accepting of everybody. Not, you're not gonna go into school, if a Christian family went into school and said, we're gonna teach heterosexuality, that it's great, it's celebrated. It's the only thing that, you know, is good. There would be an uproar. This is the same thing on the other side of the aisle. We need a moderate, middle-of-the-ground position when it comes to teaching our kids.
And it's really hitting girls hard because girls are so judgmental in middle school and high school against each other. And they're already kind of having this identity crisis as it is, trying to figure out who they are. And, because I see, you know, my son's on the football team. The boys, they're like, this is all stupid. They're just like, go about, go about, go about their thing. Oh, I identify as a tac helicopter. Like they've got, they're, they're okay. Like they, a lot of them see it, the boys, they seem to be dealing with it better. But the girls are very confused on what's popular. What are we going to do? Are we going to do it together? And then if you're not accepting, you're terrible. And yeah, you can't, and you, certain races, if you're straight, there's nothing to be prideful about. There's nothing to be proud about. You're bad because of the way you were born.
Well, and you're correct. And boys and girls bully each other differently. Boys will punch a kid, call him a dummy, right out in front of everybody. Girls will ostracize you. And like you said, there, I don't think there's any high school kid, any junior high kid that hasn't had some sort of identity crisis going up, growing up. I mean, most kids question their sexuality at some point. It's just part of growing up and figuring out who you are. So if you have, you know, a high school kid that likes to do generally female things and they're being told, well, maybe you're a girl. You're ruining someone's life. They, they may just be more effeminate. They may like, you know, dresses and designing. And you're, you're telling them they're gay. So 10 years down the road after you've shoved this down their throat and they've decided they're gay, they're gonna wake up and realize I was never gay and my whole life is ruined.
Right. Just because as a, as a society, we say, you know, girls wear dresses and boys wear pants, doesn't mean, I mean, sometimes people were guilt. That's, you know, I mean, it'd be weird if we were like around here all the time, but that doesn't, that wouldn't make someone gay. Or just because they like prettier things or, yeah, you're right. It doesn't, just because someone has a different taste doesn't mean their sexual preference needs to be told to them. And I think, I think, you know, boys definitely deal with it too. But I think this whole menu of sexuality is really confusing to girls. And girls don't like, boys can kind of fight and then they get over it and then they're friends. Girls, it's like sixth grade till you likely town to go to college. They're fighting.
Well, there's, I mean, there's been studies done that show that women, girls are more susceptible to all of this gender ideology thing. Because they, they do generally want to fit in with the other girls. Not saying boys don't either, but like you said, boys punch each other and get over it the next day. Their best buds again. Girls aren't like that, for the most part. And so there's studies that show this, that there's been, I can't remember the exact percentage, but there is a couple of studies done in Australia and one done here in the United States, at least one, where there's been like a thousand percent increase in females who start to identify as males. And this has been going on for at least 10 years. We're just really seeing the peak of it now. So you have these girls who maybe they were confused and they were told, no, you might be a boy, you might be a boy. And we have an epidemic of girls who transitioned to boys, who regret it, who are committing suicide. And what's...
Suicide rates huge in the trans community.
Yes. And, and what's worse still is the general accepting LGBTQIA folks, there's a lot of them, like the system, the actual elitists in those groups are telling them, no, no, you can't, we don't want you anymore if they decide to detransition. And they're fought along the way.
And they're lost.
Yep. And someone like that, you know, you've gone through all of that, that pain and that suffering trying to figure out who you are. And then you're just thrown away by the people who told you you were a certain way. And that's disgusting.
Yeah, and I've seen there's been a trend of GoFundMes to, to fund all of these sex change surgeries and really young. And some of them are boys, but a lot of them are women. And then some of them, now you're starting to see these like YouTube channels of their transition and then their decision that they wish they had never done it. And then they're transitioned back. And, and a lot of them are girls. And so you're starting, and you can kind of see this timeline of the depression that builds. And some of them are getting help, but that's what they talk about. They're just lost. They don't fit anywhere. And they thought before they were lost. And so, you know, I mean, it's really sad. I think a lot of this boils down to family life. And we need to have stronger family life and parents need to be parents. And it seems the schools and our government are trying to strip that away as early as possible. I mean, they subsidize, subsidizing health or the childcare. They just, they want to start from the time the kids are born to indoctrinate them, gonna give you everything for free so that they can have them under their control.
Well, and, and what goes along with that, I think there, there's a small group of people who know exactly what they're doing when this push, they push this. Then there's a lot of people, whether from ignorance or just trying to be helpful and kind, go along with this kind of stuff. And they're, they're taking away parents' right to parent. I mean, if you look in Washington State, the next big thing that they're going to push is these health clinics and schools. And when they get that, those in there, what do you think's going to happen? They're going to push drugs, transitioning on kids and the parents won't know. They won't know. They have no right to tell them. It used to be to get an aspirin in high school, you had to call the parents and get permission. Now they're, you know, talking about giving them transition hormones and getting, going through the process to transition. It, it's insanity to me. And it's partially, you know...
But insanity has become the norm in the last couple of years. It really has. And, and I, I mean, I think we can see people, you know, with the pandemic, you can see people want to just help, keep people safe and go along. That's the, that's the majority of people. They just want to help and they just want to be good people. And so they're gonna do what they're told, I feel like, from family members. I'm just gonna do what I'm told. You know, you don't have to, right? You know, people, but that's the thing. They don't want to push back. They just want to do what's right, what they consider right. They just want to go along. The system is there to protect me, right? The system is there to help me. They really do care. But in reality, it seems like the system's there to make money, profit people, and not to help, help themselves. And that is it.
I've, I consider myself fairly libertarian on a lot of issues. And what's really startling when you say these things is those same people who are going along to get along, were the same people in 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011 that were pushing against big banks, that were pushing against Big Pharma, saying that they're hurting people, they're stealing from the poor.
Pushing against Amazon, pushing against all of it. Yeah.
Those are the same people who are accepting all of the narrative from those companies, which, which makes me sad. Because there, there were some great things that liberals in general and libertarians have done over the past 10, 15 years to highlight what was going on in Iraq, what was going on in the banks. And it's sad to see. And I, I just, I don't know what's happened in culture so quickly. And I think it's partially to do with the schools and the parents have not been parenting and the schools have been parenting.
Right. And I, and I think too, especially during COVID, you, I talked to a couple of teachers and you see the teachers unions really, I mean, brainwashing the teachers. Parents want you to die because they're sending their, they want to send their kids back to school. Parents want you to die because they don't want their kids to wear masks. Parents want you to die because they don't want vaccines for their children. That's terrible. I mean, it's terrible stuff that the teachers unions are doing. And, and the teachers are put in this place too. And, you know, there are teachers who are out there choosing to teach things that are more radical. And, and a lot of times, you know, the school boards don't know, a lot of times the principal don't even know until he gets an angry parent. I mean, because I've had that where I've had to, my son was being, he was in a reading class because he's dyslexic. And they, so scholastic pamphlets that you just have to have in school forever, but now they are written by the New York Times. It's where they poll. Now, we know the New York Times is not in the middle. It's not for education. It's for indoctrination. And, and so when you are constantly putting this in to kids' brains, you're, well, they're slow rolling it. And then Trump gets elected, a month later, it's, it's article about DACA. And, and not that I'm, I'm not against teaching about it to a seventh grader, but maybe let's take a while to teach about it. Not one day, full of a bunch of, a room full of kids who are getting special needs. A lot of Hispanic kids. My son was one of two white kids in the class. So immediately when he has a view against something, he was threatened, right after class. They threatened to beat him up. They, and, and the teacher saw it. And, but what happened? Oh, they just got a slap on the wrist and I got a phone call to let me know. Nobody got in trouble. And then it continued through the entire year until I pulled him out. So, so I mean, but if he had done that to someone else, I mean, he would have been expelled. And in Linden.
Yeah. And then that's, that's the big problem that I see. Like I said, a lot of people, and on some issues, I would be upset if they were teaching a lot of conservative, only conservative issues. They're doing it the opposite. And we need to bring the schools back to that middle ground where you are teaching. You can teach about LGBTQ. I don't care. I, I think it's a good idea to kind of prepare your students for what's actually happening in the real world. But not just that, not just DACA. I mean, it is a political agenda.
Right. And inappropriate because you shouldn't be teaching it to elementary school kids, what maybe you could introduce more into high school or middle school. Because you can't hide the stuff that's out there.
No, you can't. It's here.
It's here. And they need to, our kids need to respect people's choices. They have that choice. And we need to be respecting people no matter what their choice is and not, you know, making fun of them and making them feel even more outside of the circle than they already are. Because their choice, whatever it is, it doesn't make up who they are.
Yeah. And they've, they've replaced critical thinking with critical theory. And that's the issue. You should be in there teaching all of those perspectives and letting your kids, your students decide and be taught at home. But they've stopped doing that. And it's, it's hurting, it's hurting the family. It's hurting the culture. And it's, it's hurting the West in general. And we can't continue like this.
Yeah. So, so on the school board, if you're elected, what are maybe three things that you want to go into Bellingham and talk about or propose or try to fix? You know, what, what have parents even told you that they don't like?
Well, I think one of the points is something we've already talked about, is getting political agendas and political ideologies out of the classroom. I will work to spotlight those issues that are happening, where it is happening. I'll be that bridge for those parents so they know what's going on. So if the school board isn't listening to them, then I'll be their, the one voice, hopefully not the one voice. But if need to be, I'll be that one voice connecting between the community and the parents. And that's one of my, my big points that I want to try and push when I'm on the school board. Another is transparency. There is a huge problem. And this kind of goes hand in hand with the political ideology stuff. If parents and, and community doesn't know what's going on, then they're not going to fight back. They're not going to change things. And the school board has made it a point to shut down public comment, to leave out parents from school board meetings. And to give parents and community members who are concerned these, you know, one-size-fits-all emails. We're concerned too. We'll look into it, blah, 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 blah. So there needs to be more transparency. And one of the, the third thing that I really think is important for our students, for our, our county, for our state in general, is trade jobs. We need more students learning how to do, be a plumber, be an electrician, be metal workers. And we've pushed kids into this box of college so much that that's the only thing they see and they have to go to college. And they have to get a hundred thousand grand in debt. And then they never get the job they actually want. You can actually start programs here in Waukesha County, and there is a couple, but not nearly as many as there should be, to get apprenticeships for high school students. I mean, we have a program where they go and get their associate's degree. Why can't we have a program where they get their apprenticeship completed? These kids can get out of their apprenticeship 18, 19 years old, making 50, 60 grand. You know, you don't have to go to college.
Yeah. And it's important too because, you know, you, and you really see it during COVID. Kids, if it's not here, it's like it almost doesn't exist. And I mean, especially when you're taking away their sports and you're taking away their extracurricular activities. Kids have really gone, they've gone within, like they're really inside themselves. And, and so I, they've gotten lazy, a lot of them, not all children. But I see with my own kids, they'll go out and play. Why would I do that? Because it's nice out. Go play. And, but they, they don't immediately think, they don't wake up in the morning and get going, oh, I'm gonna go out and play or go do this or go do that. They're, oh, I can get up and say, mom, let me get on, you know, some kind of tablet or iPad or something. And I, and you, kids have cell phones and so they want to, everyone wants to get YouTube or an influencer or a gamer, you know. And I think the options for kids, because they need more job fairs, they need to know what's out there. And it needs to start early. I mean, quite frankly, maybe that's what we should be doing instead of sex ed. And showing kids early on, because, you know, in kindergarten, every boy wants to be a cop. And, you know, girls want to be nurses or doctors or, you know, it's these, this small amount of education on jobs. Instead of finding out their talents and nourishing them and, and really digging into what kids could become instead of molding them into what you want them to become. And so I think you're right, the, the, the finding out apprenticeships and stuff. Because there's a lot of people who are telling me, don't put your kid in running start. Like, don't, don't expose them to this. Because, so that's the other thing. And, and so I think it's important to get kids active, get kids involved and showing them hard work. Because that's my point. Hard work has disappeared. And, and the jobs where, you know, kids go, okay, I'm gonna go work at McDonald's, get a starter job. Well, those are lessening and lessening as we start getting, you know, automated and robots. And, and so kids need to know what hard work is instead of on demand.
Yeah. And that, and that goes along with what we were talking about is if they haven't been, they haven't been put in a situation where they can see that sort of stuff. I mean, I have a friend, he went to college, he was gonna, you know, do some, sorry, he was going to be a chef or something. That didn't work out. You know what he did? He went and became a plumber's apprentice. You know what he makes now? $60 an hour doing plumbing. And, you know, we've, we've highlighted, like I said, that college is so important. And to be great, you have to go to college and it's not true. We need to start making heroes of those people who work with their hands because they do a lot for our community. We have hundreds of thousands of jobs that aren't being filled. I mean, as a truck driver, you can make a hundred grand a year easy. And...
Especially now.
Yeah. And, and we've, we've, we've created, we're creating generations of kids who think that college and YouTube stardom are the only two options. And it's dangerous. And we...
Yeah, college or go be an idiot on the internet.
Yeah, exactly.
And then you can like, you know, become a boxer because you're a YouTube star and, you know. I mean, it's just, it's, it, it, it seems like the insanity is spiraling really quick. And, and they're just hit with so much stuff. And I think we need to get back to protecting our kids from, I think kids are in danger right now. I really do. And I, and I appreciate you running for school board because that, parents need to be involved at the school board level. And people need to be sitting on the school board because there needs to be accountability at the base level. And that's the base level of where our kids are, they're starting here. And kids, you know, they should be able to go to public school and learn. And they shouldn't be in danger at school.
Is that so much to ask?
Is it? Right. Is it so much to ask for? I, oh, I was gonna ask you. So there, we've heard that there is a library, it's like exclusive or equality library, something like that. Have you heard of that?
I know they have sections within a few of the schools that are inclusion and equity.
Right. I'm trying to figure out, is it something for the teachers to pull from and teach or is this accessible to the students?
If it's the same thing I'm thinking of where there is the section, no, it's for, it's for students. And there are books specifically that are given to teachers. I talked to a couple of parents about when some of the I Am Jazz stuff was coming up in the national news.
Because that's part of that library.
Yes. And there was actually a group that came in and offered to buy the book for every teacher if they would read it to their students in the Bellingham School District. Yep. And so this stuff is being pushed. And like we talked about in Pride Week, they're putting books in the classroom that... What's that one book that was just in the news? What's it called? Not My Fault?
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Guess what? It's in Bellingham School District. And it was in the classroom, sitting there, right on the mantle for the kids to read. This is the kind of stuff we're putting out for. For those of you who don't know, Not My Fault is basically a completely racist book. And it talks about how if you're a minority, you can't succeed. And whiteness, being white is a contract with the devil. And just by being white, you're taking land from people. You're pressing people. It, it's a terrible book. I mean, it's not nuanced at all. So that's the kind of stuff that's being taught in our classroom. And they have it, they're pushing it. It's normal. I know somebody who talked to the assistant superintendent who basically said that critical theory is what we teach now. You know, it's, it's not some little hole in the wall where three or four radical teachers get together and then go teach it to four out of 500 classes. No, this is being pushed from the top down. And when you talked about teachers unions as well, they're forcing superintendents out of their position if they don't agree with that kind of stuff.
You're seeing a lot of superintendents step aside right now.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of them. And from sources I know, some people who have told me about what's going on, there's at least six or seven within Northwest Washington area that we think are pushed, being pushed out. Because the superintendent's job can only be done if the school board allows him to do it. So if the school board is all on board with this stuff, they rubber stamp stuff for the superintendent and he can't do anything if, if they're all against him. So...
So in Bellingham, does the school board review curriculum or can they poll curriculum and replace curriculum? Do you know?
I think they just go along with whatever the state has told them to do. Yes. There's, 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 there, I'm sure there is the option where they can, because there's a few different school districts in Washington State that have kind of pushed back on this stuff and said, no, we're not teaching this. We're not teaching this. But somewhere like Bellingham, they just, they do what they're told, for the most part.
And are those books that are accessible to children, they're sexually explicit?
Yeah. Well, the sex ed curriculum, they're teaching to the kids. This isn't just like an option for kids to go and look at. There are those... Yeah, well, the sex ed curriculum, they're teaching to the kids, this isn't just like an option for kids to go and look at, there are those books. Um, but they're teaching sexually explicit things to kids and. It's it's been somewhat difficult to try to get. A peek behind the curtain, if you will, on stuff that they don't just have on their website, um, but. Uh, uh, from some of the books I've seen that are part of the sex eds that they recommend for secondary reading are sexually explicit. And and go into pretty grotesque sex.
So this this is something that the parents need to raise up and. And have concern and demand to see what is being shown to the children, I mean, they can't hide that. And so they need to, I'm. I would say as a parent in Bellingham, which I hope to never be a parent in Bellingham. If I had my kids in the public school system in Bellingham, I would say. We as parents need to approve what you're, you you used to have to give permission for your kids to watch, like Huck Finn. Or I remember we were in high school, we were watching Selena with Jennifer Lopez and I had to get a parent signature to watch that movie.
Oh, how things have changed, right?
Understand, I just don't understand how they are doing this under the cloak of education. Without permission, I mean, I know we voted. But again, that brings me back to, can can the school board then decline to teach all of it?
Yes, yes, in Washington State, there are, there is an RCW, I can't remember exactly.
So there's local control.
They can deny any stand, state mandated curriculum if they want to.
Including Common Core, which is crap?
Technically, yes, but that would be a little, yeah. Nothing to touch. Yes, there's a lot that are retiring, there's actually one and I won't disclose who in Bellingham that is sick of it and and she has been done.
Well, maybe we should retire, she'll come talk to us.
I know, that's what I'm hoping.
That would be great.
There are concerned teachers and the problem is. There's not enough pressure being put on the system for teachers to feel comfortable to come out and say, this is what's going on. If we had more parents getting involved, like Meridian School District, you know, you have the thousand parents. All those teachers there, I bet they feel real happy if they're against all this stuff, that they've, they're more open about it. But Bellingham, we don't see a huge pushback, we do have people trying, but the school board has done a very good job of shutting parents down during meetings. So people don't know that they're all supported.
Or is Bellingham School Board meetings still on Zoom?
Yes, uh, I think they were going to do the next one, which is this month sometime. I think it's this week, uh, I think they might have been doing, they might do it in person, so, yeah, I would love to go. I I would love for all the people I know to go, cause there, this this is not a political issue, this is. A radicalist side issue, I have tons and tons of Democrat liberal people I know in Bellingham. Parents and community members who are done, this stuff is dangerous and they get it. So th- there is hope, I really think there's hope, um, I know somebody who's been a Democrat their entire life. Who is part of the LGBTQ community and she's done. She said, I will not vote for another one of these people until something changes because liberals used to be about equality. And letting people live their lives, now they've gone into the opposite direction and they're telling you how to, you should live your life. And these, this is a radical extreme group, I'm not gonna put it all on all Democrats or just like I wouldn't put. All of one thing on Republicans, it's it's. An elitist group that's pushing these things and they're very powerful, it's not teachers unions.
Right, teachers union is like a mob.
Yeah, they're 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 a monster to be reckoned with.
Yeah, I mean, you, I mean, the presidency even scared of them. So, I mean, they're they're definitely a force, I I know, I think that. Again, I think parents need to rise up and they need to be the force because I know not everybody can pull their kids out of school. But it'd be nice if we could, you just take them all out, that would be a, that'd be a good protest. And you, I mean, without the students, they have nothing.
Well, we've seen a huge spike in that actually happening, I was it close to. Before, when we got the statistics, it was like seven percent in the state of Washington had pulled their kids out, I think it's a lot higher now. Um, but like you said, it's expensive, the alternatives just aren't there all of the time. But we do need the parents to stand up and I want to be that person that can be at the front of the group. That can go, I'll take the arrows, just come behind me because we need people like that, I don't, I'm not some great leader. I'm not putting in myself in that position, but. Regular individuals have to step up and be the leader, whether they're comfortable doing it or not.
Right, right, because most people just be like, well, I don't really wanna vote, I I agree with you, I'm with you all a hundred percent, but I'm gonna be over here. So, you know, and it's it's hard for people and I get it and especially again, during covid, covid has flipped everything on its head. And you can be the devil for a wide variety of reasons. And I I, people just, I mean, from, you're killing everyone or you hate everyone. Is where it's gotten.
Well, it's a power trip.
Yes, 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 and I I feel like it's a big giant social experiment.
It is and there, we could get into that another time, there's a lot of people who want certain things to happen. So they can garner more power and tell people what to do and I'm, I'm just shocked that more people haven't just questioned. You know, there's a lot of good intentioned people who are pushing mainstream ideas and they're right, but there are some that are doing some terrible things. And I was surprised, most people, a lot of people at least, didn't go, wait a minute. Well, where's this coming from? Can you show us the information that that's part of this idea and then?
There's not a lot of pushback and and it's like, cause if you push back, you're a bad person.
Yes, and it's getting dangerous too, I mean, you see partisanship too. Um, you're seeing red states get redder, blue states get bluer, what do you think's gonna happen if that continues? It's not going to be good. I'm 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 terrified of it and that, like I said, that's why I'm partially doing this, I want to bring moderation back to these institutions. Cause we have to have it or as a country will fail, we don't want an extreme on either side in power, we need both sides. To come up with good ideas and debate, but that's not happening.
And we're at a breaking point with education because they've been doing it for the last thirty plus years, they've been chipping away at the education system. And I mean, really, it's like now or never.
Yeah, and and they're gonna continue and going along those lines of how long they've been doing it, I mean, John Dewey. He wanted public schools because he wanted to churn out little factory workers and he was a socialist. Uh, people don't know that and and it didn't stop there, you have people like Antonio Gramsci. Who came over from Germany during World War Two, cause he was a communist and the National Socialists didn't like him. Uh, but he came over here and started teaching in our colleges and guess where all of this CRT. Uh, the gender theory stuff came from, people like him, who said Americans will never be divided by class. They're too wealthy, there's too much mobility in class system here, let's divide them by color and by sex and this is the outcome. It was, it was a theory, a crazy theory that most people thought, well, this is just a way to critique law or. On the basis of race or gender or sex and it's become so much more. Because a small amount of elite people wanted it to be more.
Right, and and you know, like you said, you dismiss it as crazy theory, I think that's the problem, we dismiss crazy theory all the time. Crazy becomes mainstream real quick when you don't pay attention.
Especially when you're teaching children, I mean, that's that's been the goal of power hungry people throughout history, I mean, the Cultural Revolution is like. Push the students out there, tell them all of these things, cause peo- young minds are moldable and. Young people specifically need a cause, they really do, they wanna fight for good, a lot of kids want to do what's right. But it's being twisted and people who want a certain thing to happen are twisting their kindness and their compassion. And turning it into hatred.
Right, and we should be able to see if it's from free preschool to free college. How much control is that, there, you you should be able to see the writing on the wall here, what are they trying to do? Really, you're just producing bodies, you're you're no longer the parent.
No, and that that's exactly what they want, I mean, everything they've done is to take away rights from parents. I mean, shoot, there's people out there who want fifteen sixteen year olds to vote, like. You can't even buy a cigarette fifteen or sixteen, wha- what is going on and if you are honest with yourself intellectually. You'll see that it is not for the good of anybody, it's for the good of, well, it's good for the elites, the small group of powerful people who want more power.
Right, and yeah, they want kids to vote and I had my son, right, right, so he's going to Linden Academy. And right before the um, the shutdown, his teacher brought her ballot in. That um, showed she had voted for Bernie and I was like, huh, blank ballot, sure. Showing how you're voting, I'm not even sure, I don't think she's allowed to do that. And and you know, we've gotten to shut down, I didn't say anything to the principal and she's a nice teacher, great lady. But her and Gabe had gotten, my son had gotten into a couple of arguments, heated arguments about abortion. And this is eighth grade, and no, sorry, ninth grade, freshman year and, no, eighth grade, it was eighth grade, sorry.
Everybody scrambled.
Yeah, and it's eighth grade, they're having, you know, debates on things that should be college stuff. And while I love that he likes to debate things, she basically at the end of it would be like, well, no, you're wrong. And so her belief and view was being put on the class.
And that's what we've accepted culturally, you you. You can't have somebody from one side or the other, the political spectrum, teaching that stuff, you as a teacher is to facilitate ideas. And we've accepted the idea that these things are right politically in certain environments and that's not the way it should be. And esp- and and like we talked about a little bit before, when you're in grade school, why are you talking about this stuff? Kids need to learn to read and write and do math and science and learn history. And they're suffering because of it and I think you're you're going to see this play out in the next year or two where kids aren't graduating. Um, we already have an epidemic of minority students unable to read at a high school level when they graduate high school. And that's happening more and more and it's affecting everybody and it and we should have stopped it before. Um, but we didn't think it was gonna get this bad, to be fair.
Yeah, do you know with Bellingham School District, do you know how many kids are at grade level? Um, you know, throughout, there's, they usually put out that report card.
They didn't do it this last school year. Cause they had like, I think it was, I'm pretty sure they had eighty seven percent graduation rate in two thousand nineteen to twenty and twenty to twenty one. They haven't released it for some reason and and it makes no sense because they have the information.
Right, do you know if they did pass or fail this last year?
Some of them were kind of doing that, yeah, I think they left it up a lot to the teachers, but it was kind of pushed, like. It just passed these kids kinda situation, but if you don't show up for class, it's hard to pass kids. And and that's the problem with all of this shutdowns from schools is parents, single parents, it hurts the most marginalized and poor amongst us. Their kids have nowhere to go, the parents trying to work to put food on the table and even, it's even harder during a covid pandemic. Um, so no one can really watch their kids, they can't pay for babysitters every day for someone to come over and make sure they're getting on their computer to do school. And you have a lot of those kids, I I s- I think the data will bear it out before too long, there are a lot, a lot of poor. Kids that are s- have are going to suffer extreme problems in adulthood because of this.
Right, and so I know a lot of parents are starting to raise concern with vaccination. Cause parents may have been vaccinated, but they're not sure they wanna vaccinate their children, especially their younger elementary school children. Um, and then some parents, they their kids, you know, some parents are okay with their kids wearing masks and the kids are okay with wearing masks, but some. Are done, they don't wanna do it, so with the school board, does the school board make that choice on masks? Vaccination, can they make that choice or do they just follow the health department?
I think to be fair, they're probably just gonna follow whatever anybody says, I I I don't think there's enough. Backbone in any of them really, maybe a couple, uh, to push back against that, so they're they're just going to be the conduit for everything. That the health department wants.
So without parents making a loud enough voice against, I guess maybe the thing should be choice, right? You can choose, but then I wonder if if there are kids that are vaccinated and wearing masks and then there are kids that aren't. And I wondered this because I've noticed there are a lot of portables going up right now, a lot. And I'm wondering if they're going to.
Separate them. I heard some worry about that from a couple of parents.
You're 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 segregating uh, people by their belief of something and and really, this doesn't. Tow a party line, it might a little bit right now, but I know people who are more on the liberal side that are anti-vaxers. Across the board.
Yeah, this used to be more of a liberal thing anyway, generally speaking.
Yeah, they are, yeah, anti-vax, but but then you, so it's a mix of of parents coming together now, so I I know, you know, our vaccination rate is. What, reached seventy percent?
Yeah, it's high in Wacom County.
Seventy percent in Wacom County, I think that's, I think it's age fifteen and up, I think. But but so I'm wondering when it opens up to all ages of children, what that's gonna do for the schools.
Well, I mean, the rumors in the Bellingham School District is that they will require vaccination, that's what I've heard. I've had people talk to some of the upper echelons. Yep, and they think that's what's going to happen.
They'll let you opt out for?
For medical reasons, like, I can see the Bellingham School District, if you're like immunocompromised, you have a doctor's note, then I think they will.
But you know what they do is they put plexiglass around those children, cause that was my son, he's like, I'd rather wear the mask than plexiglass around like a big giant flag that I'm. I'm going against it and I'm trying to.
Yeah, they're othering people, you know, and they, I think that 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 will start to become a thing is segregation.
And the mask makes him sick. And and so he, I asked the, and the principal's like, oh, it's fine, he doesn't, doctors know, he's fine, we'll just put plexiglass around his desk and I, to me. The theory on that's stupid anyway, cause I don't think covid stops here. And and so I, I mean, he still, he, when he walks around, he doesn't have to wear a mask, somebody's walking around closer to kids. So it doesn't make any sense at all. That you are now pointing a finger at him. And the things they've done to kids, they'll do that and then if they're exposed to a kid, so football, exposed to a kid who. Test a positive for covid, immediately, it's two weeks away from everyone, they call the school, they called the church. So they were, he was took, he'd take out everything immediately after being months quarantined in the house, you know? And and so just like that, they're they're isolated and we wonder why kids are depressed and then we add the rest of the junk. I think we're just, like I said, I think kids are in danger at so many different levels, it's like arrows just coming at them and their parents. Protect them and I think it's time for parents to get loud, I mean, parents are pissed, so let's hear that they're pissed. And I don't know if we have to stand outside the schools and protest, I don't know what we have to do to get their attention, that we should be in control. We elect these people.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of options.
Yeah, and and there's definitely that group of people who, I mean, obviously we see seventy percent vaccination rate, there are a group of people. Who believe a certain way and need that representation. But that's mostly adults, doesn't mean those adults want this for their children, like you said, you have friends who are, it's enough.
Well, the si- the science doesn't bear out this. This extreme position that some of the schools are taking, uh, we've known pretty early on. That covid doesn't affect children nearly as much as it has adults.
It seems the vaccine might be affecting them more than covid.
And uh, that's up to each individual family for the vaccine, but the suicide rates. The vaccine problems, you know, even if it is a less than one percent chance, if you're vaccinating all these kids. They could be higher than the deaths from covid.
Yeah, cause the heart problems that they're seeing and, you know, and again, I won't, whoever wants to become vaccinated, that's, that is a choice. And like for me, I've just, we're gonna wait and we're gonna see, that's our choice, I haven't said that we won't necessarily ever get a covid vaccination. But the ones currently available, we said, not right now, and you know, and and I just. And it's interesting, cause at first, you know, they were saying, oh, they're only, they only give you a good immunity for six months, but you can still get it. While you've had it, but then like, it's only good really for six months and now there's a, there's a study coming out saying it'll last longer. Which isn't good for these companies shareholders. So now you can start to see where they were really just hoping to make money off of the entire planet every six months.
Yeah, and I I'm not, I'm not bashing the vaccine, I think it's good for a lot of people. But it's the same people who were paying doctors to hand out prescription medicine for pain. Are the same ones pushing the vaccine, so it's okay to be a little leery, yes.
Right, yeah, cause there's plenty of people who, heart conditions, uh, there's plenty of people, the best option for them would be to get a vaccine. But it should be choice and we shouldn't have people knocking at our door to see if we're vaccinated.
Yeah, it it needs, it needs to be up to individuals, that's what this country was built on, is individual responsibility, individual choice. And if you're vaccinated and you're trying to. And if you're vaccinated and you're trying to make sure other kids are vaccinated or adults are vaccinated, why? You're safe. That it, it, it never, it never made sense to me and I. I'm not bashing either side, I think both sides have legitimate points and they want certain things happen, but you, you can't segregate kids. You can't other people, which is what we're always against, but.
Right, cause that's not, that's not equality. I mean, that goes against, so it, it's hard to watch them, you know, my body, my choice, equality this, quality that, until. But wait, except for this. So it's hard to watch, I think we should disrespect people's choices and that's what, that's what.
That's what both political sides have always, uh that's what people admired about our countries, both sides had different ideas about how to get somewhere. But they all agreed at the end point for the most part. And that's what's great is liberals, conservatives, libertarians, you know, na- name a group. They're all about individual liberty up until fairly recently, when you've had this minority of people pushing uh control.
And it, it, so, yeah, I think the people, it's, it's a good reason to come together. It really is, you know, everyone's always talking about, we need to come together and change and this and that and it, this is a reason to come together. Cause we don't need to be run over, we don't need to be railroaded.
Well, I've ag- I agree with a lot of things on both sides of the aisle, people are often surprised at some of the things I'm, I agree with. Um so you know, I try and be as neutral as I can and I've always tried to understand. Each side, yes, and if you can give me information that is logical, that goes to a certain idea that makes more sense than what I've been believing. I will take that in, I try, obviously, we're all biased in certain ways. But that, I mean, and that's what I wanna bring to the school board and I think we need in school districts in general. You, you're not there to push your ideas, you're, you're there to represent the community, the students, the parents. And what they want is more important than what you think is a good.
Right, and that's, that's the school board, the city council, the county council, they should all be doing that, representing. Those people that they represent. So tell me, what's something that you have learned from someone who maybe doesn't hold most political views? That you do, what's something that you have learned?
Well, this is funny, um I've, I've always been okay with how the criminal justice system has been for most of my life. I talk to people, I listen, like we just talked about, and I think prisons are immoral. I don't think jails are immoral, but I think prisons are immoral, I think it's a punishment. That is not worthy to the victim or. Yes, and private prisons are terrible and there's a lot of things liberals and conservatives agree on. I've changed my mind about the war in the Middle East, I think it was all a mistake, the way we went about it, if we were gonna go in there. And knock things down and leave, there's, there's an argument for that, but the way we've done things like that. Um I tend to agree with liberals on the Petro dollar, you know, like our whole system is held up by oil. And that's why we're in these countries in the first place, because if our dollar is backed by oil. And there's countries that are trying to get off the dollar to sell oil. Wow, those countries tend to be invaded or their leaders tend to be assassinated, so there's a lot of things.
We've gone backwards in the last few months on that one.
Yeah, it's, it's weird, but I, I, I'm open to all different ideas and if you can show me a better way. I think that's, that's a good, I, I think that, uh like with, I talked about prison systems, our judicial system, if I steal from you. I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't go to court and then pay the court money for stealing from someone else, it should be. I should go to you and either work for you or pay you back what you're owed with a little interest because I stole it. And our system has become so impersonal.
It's not, you mean the system's trying to make money off of you?
Everybody's trying to make money out of us.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would agree with that, so um as we wrap up here. Is there anything that you wanna say to people who'll be voting for you?
I would just like to say that you need to look at these issues, if you, if you disagree with me, I'd be more than happy to speak with you. You can go to my website at Philip for Bellingham dot org, that's Philip with one L, not two L's, for Bellingham dot org. And send me a message, I'd love to talk with you because I'm open to what the community wants. This isn't about me, this isn't about any political positions I hold, this is about what. You as parents, you as students, you as community members want to see happen in the school district. Um so consider that, don't, don't vote for somebody based on political ideology, vote for somebody who's going to be a neutral arbiter for the community. And that's what I wanna be, so I, I, I really hope that you would consider voting for me.
And you don't have a primary?
I do not, so not till November, yes, uh luckily, I don't have a primary.
So uh what sets you apart, you think, the most from your opponent?
There's a lot, but I think the biggest and most obvious thing is, I'm not go, I'm not bringing a political ideology into this thing. And it kinda goes along with what I asked the voters to consider, um I, I want to represent you, she wants to re- represent. A few different large groups, teachers unions, the Democratic Party, like she is. All for these big organizations and what they want, she's not considering you. Yeah, not at all, and that's where I wanna be, I want you to, as a parent, you as a student, you as a community member, to have control over your own schools. And I think that sets us apart by a lot.
Yeah, and a lot of times we see people like her using the school board as a stepping stone to a bigger political career.
Yes, that happens all too often, I mean, you look at some city council members, whether it's Bellingham, Blaine. Um Ferndale, people who, who use that and are in there for a term or two and then run for the legislator or runs for the senate and. It's a career to them, it's about money and power and I don't want that, I don't care about this position, yeah, I mean, this is a volunteer position, obviously. So you know, it, it's not like either one of us will make money off of this, but it is about power, you gain influence and you. You garner supporters by being in this position, I don't care, I don't, I just want to be able to have a family. And put them in schools and not worry about them coming home and calling me terrible things because they taught. That in their schools.
You want me called dad instead of landlord?
Yeah, or, yes, yeah, you evil landlord, uh so I, I think that's, that's really important, I, I. There's a lot of parents, there's a lot of regular people who are standing up to run in these positions and I'm not, I'm not one to. Use this as a stepping stone to run for some other office, I mean, maybe one day I'd run for something, but I, I just want to help the community. If you decide to vote for me, good, if you don't, well, you get what you ask for and I'm asking for you to let me give you stuff. Give you the opportunity to run your own school board.
Right, so uh you can go, everybody, you guys can go to Phil's website, can you say it one more time?
Yeah, Philip for Bellingham dot org with one L and Philip, uh or you can go to Facebook and search Philip for Bellingham as well. And my Facebook page will come up.
Okay, so you know, it's always good to get to know your candidates and really.